I'll let her know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the regular session of the Board of Commissioners. It is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. It's 8:30 a.m., so we're ready to commence business. We hope that everyone had a good Labor Day weekend, and it's good to see those of you here in public and those that might be live streaming the meeting. Welcome to all.
I just tried to get ahold of you if you were still at.
Hang on.
Okay.
Lunch for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Typical, trying to get ahold of me.
With that being said, before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, is there any public input on the agenda? If not, can I entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Aaron's, a second by Poppins. Any discussion? If not, call roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Also now, board approval for the consent agenda items. Any public input?
Move for approval.
Not, I'll ask for an abortion.
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Going on to our regular business. Item number one, Alicia. Or I guess it's Drew. Okay.
This one was kind of reassigned to me, I guess, so I'll take over on it. So at the last meeting, this was tabled. This is an application for compromise or settlement of a court-appointed lien or county aid lien, excuse me. The board wished to see a promissory note with the applicant as a means to settle this. As you can see from the attachment, this is just a simple promissory note. Traditionally, what we've seen with these, if there's some sort of compromise or settlement, there's a reduction of the total amount due. That's the preferred method from staff, just because from a tracking standpoint, this can be complicated. But if this is the commission's wishes to move forward with this promissory note structure, we can certainly accomplish that. And so I guess, just looking for feedback from the commission, one thing would be the payment per month. The county, or excuse me, the commission first spoke about $50 a month, or, you know, so I didn't want, I didn't feel comfortable putting that in there without the commission's feedback of what that would be from a dollar amount standpoint, and also if there's a default or refusal to make payments, when that default would come into play, whether it's three months, six months. So again, that was something that I think should be commission-driven, since this is a commission-driven item. So those two items, I think, need to be discussed maybe with the applicant, if there's a means to kind of come up with a payment method under this structure. Otherwise, there is the ability to compromise down to a lesser amount to allow some flexibility from that standpoint, too. So looking for any feedback from the commission regarding this promissory note, and the applicants here for any questions as well.
I guess I'd like to hear from our auditor. Is this something that's possible, convenient, or what are, how will you keep track of this, or what?
I won't keep track of it. Paul in your office will. It will be a commission-based. The compromise will happen in my office to take it off of the books, then Paul would have to track the promissory note and record the payments.
While our auditor is here, does anybody have any questions for her? Or comments?
Well, just a question. Did you, were there any letters or anything that went? I mean, he had said that he didn't know about this.
We did. We had, we had sent out billings to him and on February 27th, 2020, with bills on there, and there were payments that were made on the account in '24, I believe it was, in April of '24.
Okay.
Well, didn't he say that they had no, they were trying to get their life back together? And he's paid back a lot of bills, as I recall. I don't know who, but I mean, he indicated that he paid back a lot of past obligations that he had. So this was his final hurdle, and he was necessary for him to be able to have this kind of thing so they could purchase their first house, because this is an outstanding obligation, and he can't get a mortgage from anybody to pursue a home purchase. So.
If you wanted my recommendation on it, which I don't know if you do, I.
I think we're gonna get it anyway.
You're gonna get it anyway. I would, I would try to compromise it down rather than tracking it, because the indication was that he was gonna make $50 a month payments. That will take a long time for your office to track it.
Yeah.
If you could make it something affordable, if he could afford whatever, I mean, that would be on him, but I would probably compromise it down rather than go in this direction. You're gonna set up presidents here, and your office will have to track them.
So like, have the applicant pay for half of it, and we suspend the other half if he meets that obligation?
Yeah. Whatever dollar amount you come up with. You know, it's a $10,735 with $7,000 of it, I think, from court-appointed attorneys for a juvenile case, so. But that would be, if you want to compromise it, I think that's a smoother way to do it, if he can afford it, than doing this. I think you're gonna set a bad deal doing a promissory note on county aid liens.
Okay.
I don't necessarily think that note is a very nice gesture, but you're right. If you're gonna try to pay $10,000 off on $50 a month, it'd take forever. I'm more in favor of compromising this thing down to a realistic sum of money. And I know I'm gonna be outflanked on this thing, but I thought $3,500, we'd make him pay, and we would waive the rest.
Is that a comment, or is that a motion?
You'll have to untable it first.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move, I'll move to untable.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Landine, second by Aaron's to bring it off the table. Now, although in favor, I suppose we have to vote here.
Yes.
Go ahead, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna throw this out, probably get voted down, but I'm gonna say that we should compromise this down and charge him $3,500 and waive the remaining sum of $10,000, whatever our auditor had indicated.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion, so it can get on the floor.
Okay, we have a motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's, for discussion, I guess at this time. Any discussion? Any, let's go to this first. Is there any public input? Okay. I guess I'd like to hear from the applicant, if this is something that he's okay with. State your name and address, please.
Evan Rosima, 311 East Maple, Harrisburg, South Dakota. Yes, I am okay with that. I wish it would be $2,500 instead of $3,500. I've got very limited amount of money to put everywhere, but I could do $2,500 and pay it off in full. It would be on September 30th. I spoke with my financial advisor and everybody, and every deal that I've made so far, we're setting up to pay off in full on September 30th.
You could pay the full $2,500 off?
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay. Commissioner Schmidt withdrawn it. Commissioner Aaron's, you wanna withdraw the second?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll substitute that motion by saying I would reduce this to $2,500 to be payable on September 30th, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second for discussion only.
Okay, second by Aaron's. Any discussion by the commission here?
What is the precedent? Excuse me.
Thanks, and it's, I think, thank you for trying to get it straightened out. It's just, what is this precedent? What is the basis? Why, why, what reasons would be we using that the next person should expect the same qualifications for a significant reduction like this, is the question I would have at this time.
I don't, precedent? I don't know what we have. We've negotiated down on different situations for medical indigences where they can't pay, and we negotiate with hospitals, we negotiate on other items in the past, so I can't give you a specific example, Commissioner, but I look at this gentleman here, who has resurrected he and his wife, his life. They've gone through pretty traumatic time. They want to move on, and they've got bills that court-appointed attorneys because of litigation that they've gone through, and so I'm a bleeding heart, but I figure if he can pay this darn thing off and get on with life, we've done something good for a change.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Aaron's, you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amen there, Commissioner Schmidt. I do think you have a tender heart, and I think you want to see people get on the road, and I think we all do. And so do you, sir. I want to congratulate you on your sobriety.
Thank you.
And getting out of all of the trouble, you know, that you were previously involved in. You know, in AA, what they talk about is making amends, right? And in terms of making amends, what that also means is, we've got to go back to all those people who have done work for us in the past, and we have to support them.
Correct.
And part of making those amends and supporting them, in this instance, is making sure that they're financially taken care of. And I agree with Commissioner Schmidt. I think on balance, getting you into a house and your family is gonna do amazing things for you, both financially, mentally, spiritually. We need to make that happen. So that's why I want to compromise this. But, you know, and you're not gonna like what I'm gonna say next, of course, but not 75-25, you know? And so, and what I'm also concerned about, I know when you were here at the last meeting, you were talking about having limited funds available to make that down payment, and I want to see you be able to get into a house. You're gonna become a property taxpayer, and now you're gonna start paying the county indirectly anyway, right?
Yes, I am.
But that's good, and that's what we want to do. We want to get people onward and upward economically in life. But the precedent it sets here, unfortunately, is theoretically, what if everybody used up public resources and came in, and we did a 75-25 split? We'd be broke in a heartbeat. We're already broke the way it is, even without giving out all this. I mean, we're like $2 million over our, the amount of money we take in, based upon our proposed budget for next year. So, I mean, I'm, I'm probably not that generous financially, but maybe more so in spirit, and so, you know, I can't support a 75-25. What I would rather have you do is just make small payments towards the whole amount, and then later on, you be, you be allowed to come in, you know, and if a future commission says, "Well, Evan, you've been doing a great job paying this off," maybe now is the time we can compromise it. So that's what I would rather do, because, because I'll be honest with you, as far as the county budget goes, this is a drop in the bucket. It's not about, for you right now, this minute, it's about Evan. For the county budget, this isn't about being able to get $2,500 into the county budget, because we're already talking about cutting stuff out of next year, next year's proposed budget. It's not about that. I think more what it's about is personal accountability, financial responsibility, and setting the tone for what taxpayers expect as well. And you're just caught in the middle of that. And I appreciate you being here and going through this. I really do, because, you know, you're just fighting for your family and trying to get a financial leg up, so I completely understand that. So thank you.
Thank you. Nevertheless, we do have a motion on the table here for $2,500. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
And again, each circumstance, and I agree with both Commissioner Aaron's statements. I'm gonna speak as a victim, and this isn't your situation, but it goes back to compromising liens that other individuals have got with the county, and what precedent you're setting, and that's why I'm very interested in the next person that comes in.
Correct.
Nothing as, would frustrate me even more on top of being a victim, is if the person that perpetrated the crime against myself and my family would come back in later and get a reduction in what the taxpayers paid to defend his case. I hope that everyone understands, there was a crime, and there are crimes that we cannot just simply forget that. So again, this is a different circumstance, but again, it sets precedent. It cannot just be, oh, someone's getting their life, because there are victims out there that were affected, taxpayers on, or defense cases out there that we've got claims against. We cannot just forget about the victims. And there's a consequence as well to them, and as to the taxpayers that funded their defense. So again, I'm really interested, would love to support this if we knew clearly why we're doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by the commission? Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Call the question, Mr. Chairman.
Call the question. Here we go. Go ahead, Alicia. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Landine?
No.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
No. Motion failed.
I would say that there, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think there still needs to be some work done. I think there is a light. We just have to clear the path a little bit on your circumstance. Commissioner Schmidt, I bet, would work, myself would work, and we may be able to come up with something, so there's a justification, a rationale, so that again, your circumstance could, if it needed to be repeated, could be explained to the next person, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I moved to table one week.
It's already voted.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah, but you can, there can be another motion. We can table it.
Very good.
What, table?
What are we gonna do in a week, though?
It's gonna have the discussion that Commissioner Poppins talked about.
Because I think, and I'm sorry, I don't want to turn, but I think you're delaying the closing of his house, though.
When do you close?
September 30th.
And today is September?
Third.
Third, September 3rd.
We, we had to, we moved it because of, because of this.
Okay.
If you, if you look at this, wow, everybody has got well-meaning, and everybody's got this. You got a gentleman here that wants to get on his life. He had to postpone this thing. He still has an outstanding obligation. He still might have trouble with closing of his house, because he hasn't cleared this up. If you've ever been through house closings, and all of you have, I hope, hopefully been through there, you know that. So we gotta try to find something in some way that this gentleman can get on with his life, and it's gonna cost money. So I'm, you know, we've had people that come in and had their taxes adjusted. Every time we go through appeals, we lower taxes, well, by a tremendous amount, and we don't seem to have to have too much heartburn on that. And if their, if their assessed value is X, and we drop it down by thousands of dollars, I mean, we do that all day long. So I, I think, I'm looking at this one, and I'm thinking, this is real. This is a real case. This is a real family. And I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable, but if you choose to table, we're gonna kick this thing down the road for him for more time, but what is the end result? And Commissioner Aaron's, I'm not arguing with you. I'm not saying that, that any of the things that you said or Commissioner said is, or Poppins is wrong, but we still have to come up with, what is the sum of money that this gentleman is going to be expected to pay back? And we got $2,500 in the hand, and to me, $25 in the hand, and if you said you want to make payments for five years, let's say, I'm just throwing it out. So after five years, he comes back and said, "I've been a good and loyal individual, but now I'm going to waive some money." Well, why didn't we waive it in the first place? Why wait? Well, because he had to prove that he was responsible for paying it back. Well, he has been responsible, because he's paid off, I don't know how many thousands of dollars worth of debt right now. So to me, that shows responsibility. So I'm back to saying, at some point in time, we're gonna have to give this guy a break. And if it's 75% or 65%, let's get on with his life. So. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Chairman?
Yes.
A comment would be, is, I don't think you have anybody here that doesn't want to see you get this done, and again, that goes back to, you know, is, is our precedent that it's a victimless crime, where there's no restitution, you know, what's the checklist of reasons we should or shouldn't allow a reduction in, in the, the, or not the restitution, the fees paid back for public defense and other liens? Those are kinds of things. If it's, if it's liens for assistance for housing versus liens for public defender, it's just, what is our, you know, what's our guideline? So.
Thank you. I guess at this stage, if we don't have a motion, I guess we'll have a motion to table? I'll second. What was your motion, Commissioner Aaron's?
Motion was to table one week while we sort it out.
Okay. Table for one week, and Commissioner Poppins seconded. Any discussion?
Well, so who is going, which commissioners are gonna try and get this figured out?
I'm willing to volunteer. Commissioner Schmidt, I think.
I'll volunteer.
I think we have, our right yield to Commissioner Aaron's, so.
That's fine.
So.
Okay. Commissioner Schmidt and Commissioner Aaron's are willing to volunteer, is that correct?
I'll vote no on the tabling, but I'll volunteer to work with you.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to table in a second. No further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
No.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
If you can hang out so we can communicate, or if you've got a phone number. Awesome, thank you.
All right. So be here next week again?
Please, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is, is, again, another tabled item. Would we like to have a motion first to bring it off the table?
So move. Second.
Motion by Poppins, second by Aaron's to bring this off the table. Any discussion? Is there any public input on this matter? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Tracy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Humphrey, your HR Director. As noted, the tabled item was board action to approve the creation of new classification in the state's attorney's office for the creation of a senior trial attorney at grade 115. Under the facts embedding, we talk a little bit about the hierarchy that has been built in there back in January of '22, as well as there's an attached job description that describes what the role is. There's some modifications to a standard attorney, including supervisory responsibilities. As such, this is why this position is being classified as a grade 115. And so, just giving a little bit more of the request from the state's attorney's office, you guys have already approved additional positions in there previously brought into the budget. This position, this action is asking for the creation of a senior trial attorney within the org chart. It may be utilized in the future for retention and recruitment purposes, and it's anticipated that it will not result in any 2025 budget changes due to the nature of the recruitment process. Myself and I believe the state's attorney's office here for any questions.
Thank you. Is there any public input on this matter at this time? If not, I guess, is there any questions for, for Tracy on this matter?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Woolman.
Okay. Commissioner Schmidt would like to hear from Mr. Woolman, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Goodhearted? Question? Or you, or just, or just my pitch? This would be a promotional opportunity within the office, you know, as, as we've grown over the last 30 years, obviously, the office has grown as well, and we've got some intermediate management things that we'd like to have addressed through this position. This would be a promotional opportunity within the office. Currently, we've got nine attorneys in the office, will be 10 hopefully soon. You know, as we grow, again, it's a promotional opportunity, and it is a supervisory, intermediate supervisory level within the office, just to establish somewhat of a command structure. So, any questions beyond that?
Tom, I don't have any questions, but thanks for bringing this forward. You know, I've said this before, in any professional organization, and whether it's, if you're working in the highway department, and you work with your hands and on your feet all day, or you work in the treasurer's office, or you work in the state's attorney's office, any professional upward, needs to create upward mobility for their employees, because it helps with recruiting, and retention, and morale, and all those sorts of things. Now, do I like the budget implications? Obviously not. I don't think any of us do. But we've got to balance all of that with creating a professional, growth-oriented organization. And when I say growth-oriented, I, I don't just mean growing the number of employees we have, I mean, being able to grow the organization in terms of professional and personal development. So, thanks for bringing this to us, and, you know, and I think, you know, in terms of building high-performing organizations, this is what we have to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron's, and this is a need that we've identified, that we want to get in place for when we're ready to make that promotion. Of course, there is no budgetary ask this year, but in the, in the future, there certainly would be, and, you know, it's, I, I think as the third-largest county, the two counties above us, they have this, this style position within their organizational chart, and I think it's a time that we have the same. Thank you.
Thank you. So you're not actually intending on filling this right now? It's not in the budget? You just want to be doing this for the reclassification?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Tom, just quickly, I'm gonna say this is levity. What exactly is 20% gripping in the job requirement?
20% gripping?
Is, no answer.
Carrying computers, files.
Gotcha, thank you.
Heavy-handed, yeah.
It's like in the movie credits.
The grip, right, right. Lighting, camera work, et cetera.
Sorry.
Gaffing.
A little levity.
Right.
Hopefully. Was there a motion to approve?
There was not yet.
I would offer that.
Second.
Did you want to ask for public input first?
Okay, we have a motion by, well, okay, public input on the matter. Okay, we do have a motion in a second by Poppins and Aaron's. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, Alicia.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Mr. Chair, before we go on, Tom, I'd like to ask you a question. We're going through a comp plan, and we're looking at population trends, and I think that Toby told us that, you know, the city of Harrisburg in twenty-fifty will be over forty thousand, and we're going to be a hundred and forty thousand. As you look down the road, and we're studying our budget today, you know, one of the big areas is law enforcement and your department. If you had to project down the road, how, how large, I mean, and we're sending you out east now, or west out there for your department. I'm just curious as to, do you have any ratios on, like attorneys that we need per so many thousand people, or anything like that?
I, I don't have that specific.
No.
Factoid charted out. You know, I think when we developed that on the courthouse improvement plan and our long-range strategic planning, we were looking at as many as, you know, upward of twenty-five attorneys within the next ten to fifteen years. Just because it, as that new growth comes in, it brings more volume, as Sheriff Swenson adds deputies, it, it brings more volume. So, we're just responsive to that public safety need, and I think that, you know, we do our best to keep our finger on the pulse of that, and add staff cautiously where we believe it's appropriate, but.
Well, I think.
Yeah, the trends are there, that we just continue to, to, to expand, our, our numbers continue to, to grow, and I think, as I mentioned at the budget address, you know, our, our jobs just become increasingly more complex each year with more technology. And, you know, what, what used to take two witnesses for purposes of a criminal trial, now it takes upwards of ten witnesses. You know, I mean, just whether it's a DWI, or a violent felony, when we're talking about phone downloads, surveillance camera footage, vehicle data recorders, all those electronics that we utilize to put our case together, we need witnesses, and we need to procure that evidence, and it just becomes increasingly more complex, it seems.
Well, wasn't, and I, I know that everybody wants to get on with business, but sometimes information is kind of nice to have. Didn't we find out that our public defender had as many cases the first half of this year as they did the pre, entire preceding year, like twenty-three, something like that?
Uh, I believe that, yeah, it's pretty close to that number, yep.
So it goes to tell you what kind of strange you have on your department?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. All right. Item number three is a public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five Lincoln County budget. Mr. Anderson?
Paul Anderson, Commission Office. Yes, so we'll, we have a little bit of action to take care of first, and then we can continue moving, we'll have the auditor with some changes that occurred over the course, or things that will have impacts for the twenty-twenty-five budget that you guys need to take motion, action on. And then we can hear from the treasurer and the building superintendent, I believe they have some updated information on the proposed satellite office. And then we have some outside, two outside agencies to hear from, and then we can do the, the rest of the, the hearing, continue on with the hearing. So we'll start with the auditor.
When I was reviewing the numbers that were in there, I did notice that there was some information that was left out, some changes that have happened since the provisional, and this is a list of those changes so far. So I would need a motion to make these changes, I sent it out to you the other day, but I don't know if you want to wait until we're done with everything?
Well, we need to do, we need to act on each of these individually.
I would say, well, if you're not going to accept them in whole, yes.
I would say that, let's just take care of these, this is, should see, be relatively clean, we can get that off the table.
You want to take them in order?
Well, just as a lump sum, unless someone's thinking there's something that needs to be.
Yeah, if you, I mean, if you have questions about any of the items that I put in there, then we can go through that, but I think, yeah, doing a lump sum would be just as easy. And then I'll present the complete with the changes, if, if you make any changes today with these, I will present all the information at next week's meeting.
You know, the first thing, Sheri, or Carter, can you, can you refocus that? I don't think it's you, Sheri.
I don't think it is.
I think it's the, there we go.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Yep, perfect. For the folks at home, right, so they can see what's going on. You know, what I would just, you know, I see on line number one there, preliminary growth numbers will decrease revenue, what is, what does that mean?
So what happened is, I estimated growth at five percent, and it came in at four-point-nine. So that's the taxes, it will be lowered by seventy-eight thousand.
So that's like a, just a one-tenth percentage adjustment? When you, when you say you estimate it at five, but it came in at four-point-nine, what?
So I had, with the numbers that I put in there, I had, you get growth plus CPI, so I had it at eight, eight percent, but it's actually seven-point-nine. So then this, it just lowers the tax by that amount, and it happens every year.
Yeah.
This is pretty common. And then we didn't include one of the medical, or the medical license renewals, and then the next one, we didn't have the grant revenue at all for the diversion coordinator in the State's Attorney's Office. And then the, that last one is a roll fire, and that obviously is going to change the same as the county growth.
So seventy-one thousand nine hundred and six is a decrease?
Increase to revenue.
Just so that everybody.
With all those, with all those numbers up there, yeah, it's an increase to revenue of seventy-one thousand.
Okay, just so everybody understands.
Yep. And then the bottom portion is a decrease of.
Revenue.
Expenses.
Expenses. And the one you have highlighted, what is this?
I just put the, when I sent it out to you, I sent it as, it said retirement again, the same line as above. It's not, so it's actually lowering the work comp.
Okay.
On your budget.
Basically, you're just fine-tuning.
Yeah.
Your projections here is what you're doing.
Yep, yep.
I mean, you came in, one-tenth of one percent is probably considered a pretty good projection, right?
I am amazing.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion in lieu, if there's anybody, unless there's somebody from the public that'd make a comment.
I'll second that, and just ask Sheri. She'll tell you how amazing she is.
Before we move on, is there any public comment on it? If not, we have a motion by Poppins, and a second by Aaron's in regard to this. Any discussion by the commission? If not, Alicia, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay. Next. Paul? What do you have? You said there was, what, about five different?
Well, we have the, the treasurer and the building superintendent, you know, they discussed the possibility of the satellite office, I think we have updated numbers on the proposed cost for remodeling up there at the Liberty, the old Liberty Elementary, and then estimated cost for supplies and equipment to furnish it.
And this is for what, again, now?
The proposed satellite office for the tax clerk in Harrisburg.
Now, there is no formal satellite office yet at this time.
Right, it's just a proposal.
Just so public understands.
Good morning. So we went and visited the potential site for a satellite office in Harrisburg. I know John has reached out to a couple contractors, got some estimates, I went through an estimated office supplies that we would need, like desks, chairs, that kind of stuff that we would need to set up there. My estimation is about fifteen thousand to get all the furniture that we would need in that office. If it happens.
So I, I also reached out to a contractor to see what it costs to do some basic remodeling to make that a more functioning space. The two options that the city offered us was a classroom that currently has a wall that divides, that was put in place and divides that space. We would need to create windows in that space, but it's a little unknown. I reached out to Arc Inc., who had some of the plans that we were looking at, and all they could tell me is that, that it isn't a weight-bearing wall, so it could be modified, but at this point, we, I asked, had to ask the contractor to assume it's probably a block wall, and it would have to be removed and maybe rebuilt. That's what the architect suggested is, is remove completely, rebuild, instead of just trying to punch holes, it's just said it would be a lot of work to try to punch holes in an existing block wall and, and make it function right. So, in the two different concepts, so basically, these spaces are pretty close to the same. They both have a, a close access point to them from the exterior of the building, but the one currently had a wall, the other didn't. So basically, the, the pricing that I got was a lot more than I thought it would be, but it was forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the one room, just to, that's currently a full, open area, and we would build the wall from scratch. And in that process, we would have to put a, a, a commercial-grade door to enter from one room to the other, and that was the forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And the other one to do the demolition would be sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Now, of course, I asked for a budgetary number, so I would anticipate these being somewhat inflammatory, but as of lately, it seems like those numbers come back pretty real or even low, so I don't know what this tell you as far as that goes.
John and Franny, and maybe this is a question more for Franny, I, I've been in those rooms too, I've been, you know, spent a lot of time in the elementary school up there in Harrisburg. You know, last week, I was in six different courthouses, up and down I-29, and let me tell you something, we're blessed to have the kind of facilities we have here, so thank you very much, and thank you to the commission for supporting having some pretty good facilities. But I go into some of these buildings, and let me tell you what, they're a hundred years old, and there's a desk and a chair, and there's somebody working in there. And here in South Dakota, people, you know, appreciate the kind of quality service that Franny and her department offer, but, you know, and please forgive my ignorance, I just have to ask this, can't we just put somebody up there with a table, a desk, a chair, and a computer, and whatever other equipment they need, without doing all this expensive remodeling? Or, or am I just ignorant about this?
Well, I think our biggest thing with the remodeling is, we would need to have a secure place for our safe, all of our money, to make, you know, that's kind of what the remodeling would kind of help prevent, it would protect the employees from the customers, and kind of keep all the money and everything away from the public.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I would repeat that as well, but, you know, some of the expense in this is just all the unknowns, you know, because you, you really got to go from the floor all the way to the floor above. And there's ductwork and all that, that they got to work around. It, it becomes kind of a difficult wall to put in place, if you could imagine, and it very well, easily could come back in as a lot cheaper than this, but it's just, at this point, there's just unknowns, you know?
John, you had sent two quotes for one and two, and one was forty-eight, and the other one was sixty-some thousand, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. So, either way.
Depending on which option we went with, correct.
You know, Commissioner Aaron's, originally, I had thought, because I had talked about a satellite center, and certainly that is a big topic up in Sioux Falls. And I thought about, you know, I, I agree with you, a table and a chair, and we did have a, a site at one time. But I think what will happen is, over time, when you put a satellite office in that is a closer proximity to Sioux Falls and Canton, you're going to see an ever-increasing amount of, of people driving down to that satellite office. And I think the growth potential is, is quite large. And judging from the amount of questions and, that I've had, and people have questioned on, when are we going to get one? You know, this is an opportunity, and I was playing some games with this, okay, so we're going to jump ahead here, and let's cut out a lot of the other stuff. This thing is going to cost us, in a guesstimate, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, when we get it all done, when we pay for the additional person, when we put the IT, when we build the whole thing, that's a non-budget item this year, that's a one-time thing. And then, when you have it in place, of course, then you will still have that, an extra FTE up there. So you got a weigh here on what the potential is for the county, and the desirability to meet the population that's going to ever increase in that area, because that's where your growth area is going to be, right in that corridor. So, I think that's something we, as a commission, should spend a little more time, maybe talking amongst ourselves with these numbers, get actual hard numbers, and then decide what the best course of action will be.
I agree with you, Commissioner Schmidt, I think you're right. Probably, it's a great idea, but like all great ideas in, in government, takes time to flush them out, make it work. And, you know, I like to say this about the government budget, we have to flatten these budgets out, and if that means doing things over the course of two years instead of one year, or what have you, I'm, I'm always in favor of that, because we've got a lot of roller coaster going on in, in our budget right now, you know, like, you look like, you look at some of the vehicle replacement, we're doing like seven, eight, nine vehicles a year, instead of spreading them out, doing two or three per year over the course of three or four years. It's just, it's not a flattened-out budget, it's a roller coaster, and it's bad public budgeting in my estimation. So I think you're probably right, Commissioner Schmidt, need to take some more time to flatten out the budget, figure out how to do it. And I think you're also right about the fact, it's going to be like moths to the flame. We're going to put the flame up there, we're going to open up shop, and I'll tell you what I'm concerned about, you get one person working in there, and they're going to have fifty, sixty people in line waiting. That's really what's going to happen. And then they're all going to be mad as heck, because we can't take care of them, but they get the added convenience of driving ten or fifteen minutes, instead of driving thirty minutes to Canton, but then they'll all be sitting there in line, and then Franny's phone call, uh, uh, phone is going to light up with complaints about, why aren't, why isn't it moving faster? Because people will just take it for granted. So I agree with you, Commissioner Schmidt, let's flush it out some more.
And Commissioner Aaron's, those people are all going to be from your district.
My comment on this is the opportunity, I can't imagine how we can have a much better opportunity than we do in front of us right now. It may not be something that we all want to spend money on, because we're, we sit with a very tight budget all the time, but sometimes we just have to provide the services, and this is one of the repetitive things that we've heard from the public, is satellite office for, as long as I served from back in two thousand and two, was, and that was when our population was considerably smaller than it is now, was, can we get a satellite office up on the north end? So sometimes opportunity presents something, and you got to be willing to take, take advantage of it. So I'm on the record as a one-hundred percent in favor of moving forward with this, so thank you.
I just feel like, right now, it feels a little shoot from the hip to me.
Oh, there's details that have to get worked.
Yeah, like, you know, how's our IT department going to be affected as far as getting this thing up and running? And the issue that Commissioner Aaron's points out, if you have that many people standing in line, and only one person to service them, that's not a good thing. I mean, we've got how many windows here, and there's, you know, people standing around in line out here, and they're not happy about it either, and it's a lot less than the numbers that I think, well, that will get drawn to Harrisburg. So I just think that there's some fine-tuning in what, what this really looks like, as far as long-term, and adding that there, because that might totally flip-flop, for then, we have all these windows, and we don't need all these folks down here, we need them up, up in the satellite office. And I do support the idea, I just don't feel like it's been vetted out enough yet.
Well, I, I look at it that, you know, we've kind of met with this decision about the highway shop, remodeling it, and what it was going to end up costing us, and we decided to wait on that, and I kind of think this is kind of the same thing, I just don't think I can support it, spending that amount of money, a hundred and twenty-six thousand or more. So that's where I think I'm coming from.
Yeah, I mean, and don't get me wrong, I do support it, I just don't. Yeah, I mean, and don't get me wrong, I do support it, I just don't think it's been uh vetted out in the numbers and how, you know, how even your own office is going to be affected, the day-to-day operations of getting this up and running. So I've got some concerns about that.
I'll be willing to, Franny, I'll be willing to work with you and we'll get a little more detail on this because we got to look at some projections as to uh what Commissioner Aaron says. Yeah, there'll be a lot of people floating around there, there there and, you know, they're like anybody else, they don't want to stand in line. So we got to, I I think we got to look at uh, you know, a projection of maybe uh five years and put some total costs together and look at some potential numbers that we have and come back with a little more detailed plan, if that's okay with you guys. I'll be happy to work with you on that.
Franny, I'm just going to say this to add some levity, you don't have an employee who lives in Harrisburg right now, do you?
I I have one. But I do have two people who have been interested in moving to that location and then with the new hire, so.
Is it po- you know, and I just said that to add some levity, of course, but thank you for the reply. I mean, let me ask you this, and I'm just throwing it out there and if you don't have the analysis on on it right now, that's fine. Is it possible to restation an employee instead of adding a new FTE?
Um, we could, I plan on restationing two up to that office already. The more I restation from here, I'm I think I'm going to have a harder time getting people willing to go up there. And I with keeping the mail and the phones just coming to this office, I don't want to lose too many people down here because we will still have customers in office and then handling all of that here also.
No, I appreciate that and I think that's a fair response. I mean, obviously, if we restation and open up a new satellite office, clearly, you know, there's only X number of people who need our services, right?
Yep.
Well, you're going to have not as many people being serviced down here anymore and instead they'll be theoretically serviced up in Harrisburg. So it's as if, you know, of course you have to factor in the growth pattern, of course, because there's new people coming to the county who need services. But theoretically, we're just changing the place where people get the service, we're not necessarily adding the number of services that are occurring. And I'm just wondering, in terms of, you know, my approach of flattening the budget out, is it possible in the short term, in order to make it more palatable economically, to restation somebody? And then after we figure out what the what the growth or what the service demand is going to look like, then maybe we start talking about adding an FTE after that. So we don't go like whole hog here at the beginning, we just kind of, you know, stipper, stick our toe in the pool, if you will, see how it works and then talk about adding, because you know, for an FTE, we're going to end up spending seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year. And I'm just wondering, are there other more creative solutions to servicing people other than just automatically spending the most amount of money upfront? So it's just things I'm thinking out loud.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, this is something that you have not put in your budget, so the purpose is here today is to try to see if there's enough support to put a budgetary item in place to move forward, because there are a lot of details. But if we don't have in the budget, it would be extremely difficult to move forward in the next year. So, you know, again, I'm I'm supporting adding a dollar amount, whether it's a hundred and twenty-six thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, something to the budget, so then at least you have the ability to work through the details and if the opportunity does look good at that time to move forward. So um, Ms. Chairman, if if we're getting to a point of asking public opinion, but I, you know, I'm ready to offer a motion to we add this to the um budget for next year, so.
Okay, we have a motion to add it to the budget, is there a second?
The full-time employee is already included in the budget.
It is. It is already in the budget? Okay, would you like to withdraw your motion?
No, it's it's the remodeling costs and things like that 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 they need added to the budget, but but if there's any public opinion.
We need some pub- public opinion on this thing.
Yeah, I, okay, but we do have a motion.
I'll second it to get it off, to get it on.
All right, we have a motion by Poppins and a second by Schmidt. All right, uh, is there, uh, okay, we'll pass for public.
How much are you adding to the budget?
Go for public opinion first.
For clarity, I would.
Are you adding this budget into what line item?
Under the grounds, John's budget for remodeling and such, and it would be a hundred and fifty thousand would be part of my motion.
And keep the employee.
Yeah, that would stay under hers. Because she already has that in her budget, this would have to be an add for remodeling, which would be under the uh bill- grounds and buildings, so.
I think there would also need to be an increase in the treasurer's supply and materials budget, right, for a furnishing line item as well.
So it doesn't go under the grounds of buildings, the tables and chairs?
No, that's part of.
I'll draw my motion so we can get a clarity as to what dollar amount needs to be.
Yeah, what's the budget request?
So we have a.
I got a really, I got another great idea.
How about if you let me work the numbers through and I bring it to you as a presentation again, like I did this last time with the changes in the numbers so you can see them?
Is there any public, I'd still be interested if there's any public.
Okay, well, I take it, Mr. Schmidt, you withdrew your second?
I withdrew my second.
Thank you, anytime the auditor says, I do. Okay, public opinion on the matter?
Sherry, would you also run the number, you don't need to come back up, would you just run the numbers like, you know, course of action number one, but then could you do course of action number two as if we didn't add a full-time employee? Just did a restationing?
Yep, so what you want me to do is get their numbers for the remodel, the supplies and everything else, have this one budget, then get the budget without any of it in there, or without just the employee?
Without the FTE cost, thank you.
Thank you, okay, now, public opinion, please state your name, address, and again, three minutes, please.
I'm not going to be that long, Scott Montgomery, Ferbey, South Dakota. Um, I just asked the commission to think about the precedence we're setting here. We moved one office up there, how about the next office, then the next office, and pretty soon we might just go build the courthouse the north end of the county, which in hindsight, maybe we should have, you know, nobody wants to have the courthouse leave Canton, but where's our business at? North end of the county. And uh, I hate to see us just keep moving everything to the north piecemeal and pretty soon we're not going to have anybody working down here, so that's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public opinion?
Linda Montgomery, Ferbey, South Dakota. I've been going over to Harrisburg and there are a lot of buildings over there, of course. And I think sometimes, do we need a full-time office? Could it be a, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, we have a satellite clinic? And could it be, we talk about job sharing, but could we have space sharing? And I know, um, you know, we talk about security, but the city has security there already. Can we think um as as everyone does, how can we do this effectively but maybe save the county some money? And could we team up with the city of Harrisburg to create a satellite clinic in Harrisburg for that means? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input? All right, seeing none, I guess uh we'll move on then to the next item, Paul.
So we have two outside agencies, we have uh representatives from the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance who um are looking to increase uh their ask from five thousand to ten thousand five hundred dollars. Um, so they will uh be able to explain their ask more and give a little bit more background on them, like we had the other outside agencies. And then we have a representative from the Link Triage Center in Sioux Falls. They are also asking for an increase and they will be able to give more background on their uh agency and what they provide and and kind of give more details into the ask. So um, with that, I will have the Sioux Metro guys come up first.
Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Okay, please state your name and address and.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tyler Torson, I serve as the CEO of Sioux Metro Growth Alliance out of Sioux Falls, but serve in the four county uh greater Sioux Falls metro area, so. Um, so as you guys may know, hopefully do know, the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance is our, is the state's largest regional nonprofit economic development organization. Uh, but what some people either forget or maybe don't know too is that our roots go back to the nineties. Uh, really, our roots go back to Lakita, the Lincoln County Economic Development Association that was founded in nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, so our organization since twenty two, uh twenty twenty-one was a merger of Makita, Minnehaw County and Lakita um back then. And Commissioner Aaron's, I know you mentioned Lincoln County kind of being a somewhat of a growth organization. I'd say that we view our role in a similar light as well, by helping to encourage and facilitate uh growth in your communities uh and in your county overall. So as you go for your annual budgeting process, we just wanted to check in again too and just share some updates and a little bit more on why we requested what we did. Uh, historically, even back to the Lakita days, um, as far as I could tell too, our annual dues from Lincoln County hovered right around eighty-nine hundred dollars a year uh for the last decade or so, up until about two years ago, when it looks like it dropped down to uh the current level of five thousand. So as a nonprofit economic development organization, working to serve your county and communities, uh, we really rely heavily on the dues and support of our members. Today, our organization operates and serves, like I said, a four county area, Minnehaw, Ha, Lincoln, Turner and McCook Counties. And currently serving sixteen member municipalities, six of which are here in Lincoln County. We have a lean, mean staff of five, uh after being a one-person organization for for a long, long time. And I believe that our impact and our reach uh has only gotten stronger with each passing year. Uh, for example, of some of the the events and stuff that we put on just two weeks ago, we had our, we called it the Southern Sioux Metro Bus Tour. Uh, for the last couple of years, it's been known as the Lincoln County Bus Tour, which we really appreciated, Paul being able to join us for the day. Um, to be able to see all the different types of people that we bring together and how we showcase your communities. We spent the day showing off Harrisburg and Tee, Lennox, Beersford, Worthing and Canton. In addition to the advocacy, marketing and events that we put on year-round to help showcase your county and your communities, uh, we also help facilitate housing, business and industrial growth uh year-round and obviously the retention of businesses too. Uh, and then Commissioner Schmidt, I know you mentioned uh Harrisburg's population growth and kind of the comp plan, looking ahead at the decades ahead of growth. You know, back in the Lakita days, like I said, we used to be a team of one, but now with a larger staff, we play a larger role within our communities. Uh, for example, Bryce Healy, who you guys may know, who's with me here today, uh plays a role for the larger uh SMGA operations and for our region and all of our members, uh but in addition, he also wears another hat as uh serving essentially as the executive director of the Harrisburg Economic Development Corporation. Uh, Joshua Chase on our team as well, does the same thing on a part-time basis in uh Lennox, serving as their executive director for the Lennox Area Development Corporation too. Our team also does research, tracks progress and works closely with all federal, state and local partners in economic development year-round. Uh, I'm hoping that you guys are uh receiving copies of our Quarterly Growing Places magazine. Uh, if not, we we need to make sure that we get you on that list, but I'm sure you are, um, hopefully you're getting that and taking a look. Because it really does showcase a lot of the cool stories and businesses and communities and also some of the data points on the back side too. Uh, we do building permit numbers and sales tax collection numbers and that kind of thing too. Uh, looking at quarter one twenty twenty-four to quarter one twenty twenty-three, sales tax collections just in our Lincoln County communities alone are up ten percent. Uh, out of the twenty-three hundred or so building permits last year for all of our communities, that totaled uh three hundred and twenty-four million dollars. Uh, over half of that was in Lincoln County at a hundred and eighty-one million. But really, just in short, we just wanted to touch base, stop by and just say that we really appreciate uh your guys' long-term membership. Our history and roots, they go back uh to this county from nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, we appreciate working with you and your communities and uh want to continue to do so, thank you.
So is it additional services that you'll be adding? That's why you want the increase or just that your numbers in all the current areas are increasing so?
So um, thank you, Commissioner, uh, so again, just kind of going back and looking at, you know, we we understand all of our members, municipalities and counties are dealing with, you know, taxpayer dollars and tight budgets. Uh, but really, we rely on membership dues to be able to put on the operations and the events and just kind of keep our organization going to be able to facilitate and further that growth all the time. Um, and so kind of just getting back to uh asking to, if we can get closer to where we were before, uh, which is before my time. You know, we have, like I said, a staff of five, but uh I've been with the organization leading it since October of last year, so have had to do a little bit of a historical catch-up on some of the stuff. And I would say that our events and our facilitation and our impact and how we do things is constantly evolving as technology evolves and practices evolve and that kind of thing too, so uh it's it's ever-changing, but uh.
So it's three counties, right, Minnehaw, Turner and Lincoln?
Uh, and McCook County as well.
And McCook?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Um, anyone else from Link?
Hello, I'm Kelsey Sharda with Avera Behavioral Health in the Link, so Sioux Falls. Um, we are asking for an increase in our funding this year for the Link, I can kind of provide a brief overview of services. So we're located uh downtown Sioux Falls, we are um a triage center, so we provide three main services for Lincoln and Minnehaw County. So we are the designated treatment center for uh those two counties. And so our first one is our withdrawal management program, so we provide um detox services for individuals um looking to um withdraw from substances. And so they are with us about three to four days on average. And so in the past year, we served sixty-five Lincoln County residents in that program alone. Um, our other program is our sobering program, so that is for individuals who are acutely under the influence, can be brought in by law enforcement instead of going to the jail. Um, so we provide a safe place for them to um sober up, offer them services, resources. And then we also have a crisis stabilization program for individuals who are experiencing an acute mental health crisis. And so um, just coming forward to ask um for the continued support from Lincoln County as we are the designated treatment spot. So that is for individuals who um have been petitioned by the court for involuntary commitment. So um, because of their behavior and choices, uh, somebody, some loved person feels that they are no longer safe for themselves and so we service those individuals at our um at the Link, so. Happy to answer any other questions or provide more background about the services.
Your daily enrollment or or?
Yes, so for our withdrawal program, we have ten beds, um, so they're individual rooms. And on average, we have about six people per day in that program. And our sobering is a, that one kind of fluctuates the most, so again, they're with us about eight to twelve hours because we're just kind of providing that safe place instead of having to be booked into jail. Um, and that one averages about ten individuals per day.
How many, thanks for being here, number one. Number two, I I, early on, we had a number of people, I mean, a couple of years ago when the Link first started. And I asked a question then of how many Lincoln County residents were being serviced? And I think at that time, it was either too early or
Sure.
they didn't have the numbers or whatever, I don't know the reasons why they didn't want to provide that. But can you tell us today how many Lincoln County residents are being serviced each year?
Yeah, so in our withdrawal management program, it was sixty-five.
Thank you.
Yep.
Per year?
Per year, yeah, and then we also have sobering, um, but those individuals do not get like a medical record created um because it is kind of a fast turnaround, it's kind of a open evolving door. Um, so I don't have stats on that, but if we, you know, if you did like quick math of, you know, our withdrawal program, we have um, we service about fifty-five people a month on average. And so about thirteen percent or so are Lincoln County residents. And so if we did that same math for our sobering center, um, we service about two hundred and fifty in that a month, so. So that gives you some rough numbers.
How are those sixty-five individuals, how do they come, how do they end up with uh programming at the Link?
Sure, good question, so we um do walk-in service, so about twenty-five percent of our folks are, just can walk into our door. They don't need any type of referral or anything. Um, the big portion is law enforcement, they are brought in by law enforcement. And the folks that are um under the involuntary commitment process, they are brought in by the Sheriff's Department.
And what is your request this year?
Uh, for twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five?
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, it was fifteen thousand last year.
Okay. Is it year three already?
Yeah, we opened in twenty twenty-one, so yes.
Is projection versus reality similar or way?
It's been our busiest year, so, yeah, I think the word just keeps growing about what we do there and the need obviously isn't going away either.
And it's a a good use of taxpayers' money to and resources to.
Definitely, I mean, it keeps them out of jail, it gets law enforcement back on the street instead of having to go to, bring them to. Definitely, I mean, it keeps them out of jail, gets law enforcement back on the street instead of having to go to, bring them to like an emergency department, for example, where they'll spend hours waiting on that individual. They're in and out of our doors within 10, 15 minutes, so.
Do you ever see yourself adding a program beyond, you know, the immediacy of getting them sober or getting them through a detox? Do you ever see adding, because a lot of these programs like yours really do offer some kind of counseling and some kind of processing? Where are you in that process?
Yeah, so we do have an addiction counselor on staff, so they do receive programming while they're with us. And then oftentimes we're connecting them to that next step. So whether that's inpatient treatment or outpatient treatment, whatever their needs are, we're helping connect that. There hasn't been any recent talk about expanding services as of right now at our facility. We're kind of confined by space and funding.
And funding.
And staffing, yeah, the same, same problems we all have.
So there are, there are residents that come to you through the involuntary commitment process?
There is, yes.
So I take it they start with you, but then they are, if it is determined by the county board that they should be committed or at least held like on a 48-hour hold, are they held the whole time at your location? Or do they get moved to Avera Behavioral?
Yeah, good question. It's kind of a complicated process. So the mental health hold process is different than addiction or the involuntary commitment process. So first, a loved one would go to the clerk of courts and fill out paperwork to apply. They are then assigned an attorney. Oftentimes for Lincoln County, we work with Ike Law Firm. She tends to get assigned a lot of those cases. And then we send paperwork to the sheriff's office and they have five days to pick that individual up. And then they are brought to the Link and we can hold them up to 10 days. So that gives us time to help them safely withdraw. We do a chemical dependency assessment with them. And then our counselor makes recommendations on what their level of care should be after the Link. And then that is processed with the attorney. Sometimes it does go to a judge if the individual fights those recommendations. But a lot of times they tend to agree and go on with the process. So we can hold them up to 10 days. Sometimes it's longer if we have to wait for a bed to open up at a treatment facility. I mean, sometimes people have been with us for weeks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by the commission? Any, any public input, I guess?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other public input or? Okay, is there any other agencies? Oh, we have Scott.
Public input.
Scott Montgomery, fair view.
I think it's money well spent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so right now on, on for the outside agencies, for Sioux Metro to get that increased to their requested 10,500, we would need a motion to, to get that included in the budget. Right now their line item is set at $5,000. So we would need a motion to increase it, right?
Yeah, but on a second note, the Link does get all the opioid money that we get.
They get what?
The opioid money, opioid settlement. That's the only place we've got it set up to go to now. So when you're looking at doing the increase, I've got $76,000 in there right now that we'll probably be sending to them.
In addition to the, what was it, 15,000 last year?
Addition to what you're approving for a budget request.
Okay.
What does that opioid money go for?
I don't know. I hope I see an end to it soon because holy knollie. That's just what we received so far this year is 76,000.
So how does that get transferred over to them as a?
You write a check.
But it gets listed as just proceeds from opioid settlement?
Pretty much. That's why when you're, when you're looking to do the increase to them, they are getting additional funding from the opioid.
Why do we give them all that?
They're the only opioid treatment center in the area.
Okay. Well, what I'm saying is why don't we hold some of that? You can't hold any of it back, you gotta give it all to them?
Well, I mean, you have to, you have to give it to an opioid facility. It has to be used for opiate reasons. So to hold it back, it's, I think it's going against what they're set it up for.
So, yeah, I, I, I was thinking in my mind, it was part of a settlement that just goes into the general fund. I didn't know there were strings attached to it.
Nope, there's strings.
And they're the only opioid.
As far as I've been able to find.
There's a, there's a list.
Paul, you don't need a motion now, we can do it at the end or?
Yeah, we can do it at the end if you guys have other and then, so from now on, we, it's kind of up to you guys. There, you can take a look, you can request any changes you would like on the provisional, on any line items. Now's kind of a year, another chance for you guys to deep dive into anything you would like to take a look at, make any red lines. And then at the end of that, if any changes come from that, we can do those changes and then address the, the two outside agencies as well. And then we also will need public comment for.
Giving us a lot of options there, so.
Yeah, I, there's.
I guess.
This, this part here is a little open-ended and I will leave it up to you guys there. And then let you make the decision on how, on what else you would like to see. And then once you've exhausted all of the things you would like to see from that next part, then we can take public comment and have the last couple cleanup motions. And then we'll have more stuff for you in the future from what the auditor talked about.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to move forward if the commission is, unless they want a motion right now.
It's a public hearing. So you have to have.
Public comment. Yes, is there public comment?
So we need proponents and opponents.
Proponents and opponents for today.
What's that?
We need proponents and opponents for proponents in favor of the budget and opponents.
Okay, are there any other items that we're looking at? Okay. So currently, are we looking for proponents now at this time? Okay, any proponents? Any opponents then? Okay, seeing none?
Yeah, if there's no other changes, then the two things we can look at now are if you decide a, a motion to approve increasing Sioux Metro Growth Alliance funding from $5,000 to 10,500. And then a motion approving the Link's funding request for, from 15,000 to 25,000.
You, you want them in all one motion or two?
Together if you're gonna approve them together. Otherwise, we can do it in two separate if you'd like to discuss them separately.
All right.
Paul, I thought the Sioux Metro was at 7,500. Maybe that was a prior year, but could, could we just check that once?
Yeah.
Sioux Metro has been 5,000 since 2022.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seven, eight.
Okay.
Eight, seven, eight, nine, eight, seven, and then 5,000 starting in 2022.
Okay, thank you.
I'll offer a motion to approve both. Okay, Commissioner Poppins, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second by Aaron's and it was, the motion is to approve both and that would mean both increases, correct?
Correct.
All right, is there any discussion by this commission?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, after hearing about that opioid settlement money, worthy cause, they do a lot of good. But if we're already sending the opioid money up to them at 65 residents a year, I don't see the need to have to increase from 15 to 25. And then with Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, if it's been 5,000 since 2022, I could see a little bit of an increase. But just doubling it, I just can't do that. But I do appreciate all the sentiment and I appreciate those folks coming in to tell us what's going on. That was very helpful from the Link.
Thank you. Any other comments by the commission?
I'm, I can't, I can't support all of that. I would like to know one question, so to clear up in my mind. The opioid money, has that already been factored into your budget in the Link? The money that Sheri says that we're gonna send you, is that in your budget somewhere or?
Is this the first year you're sending it or has it been previous years?
No, I think we sent a smaller amount last year.
Okay, I wasn't aware of the 76,000 coming before this proposal. So I don't know if it has been factored in or
Oh, okay.
if anybody higher up in leadership has been told about it above me, but.
There probably has not been any discussion in it because these checks have come within the last three months.
Gotcha, so, yeah, so I wasn't aware.
I could, Commissioner Aaron's, to your point, I can't support a 10,000 or 100% increase, but maybe, you know, an additional $2,500 or something like that. And for the Link, looking at what they do, population-wise, I didn't put down the numbers, but they asked for another 10, so if we compromised on that one for 5,000, something like that, I could support. But we'll see what happens. We have to have the vote on Commissioner Poppins's.
What are you gonna have an amendment as well, either way?
Well, my amendment, Commissioner Poppins, would be that the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance go to 7,500 and that the Link goes to an additional $5,000 to 20,000.
I'll second for discussion, so it can get on the floor.
Okay, we have amendment, a motion and a second by Schmidt and Aaron's, any discussion? Okay, how about any public input on the matter?
I just, where I'm at, Mr. Chairman, is, and I appreciate those clarifying comments from the folks at the Link. I just, you know, look, use those one-time monies as much as possible to support this. And then when they run out, we could look at, because that, that money won't last forever. You know, that settlement will come to an end. And then the Link is gonna say, well, geez, Lincoln County, you're giving us 76,000 a year for the last three years. And then, and then potentially they could come back and say, well, we want 76,000 out of your general fund. And that's the danger of using one-time monies to budget with. But that opioid settlement is there for obvious reasons and that was to extract some economic pain from, from the oxycodone manufacturers. So I just, at this time, I would not support the increase to, from 15 to 20.
Any other comments by the commission? Okay, we have to vote on the amendment first, correct?
Vote on the amendment.
And the amendment was to increase the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance to 7,500?
Yes.
And the Link, an increase to, of increase of 5,000?
5,000.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
No.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jibben?
Yes, motion carried, or excuse me, amendment carried, three to two. Okay, now the amend, or excuse me, the motion?
It'll be the same, Mr. Chairman, as we just voted on. So the, the main motion will read the 75 and the, or the increase that we just voted on, so.
Okay, any discussion? All right, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
No.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jibben?
Yes, motion carried. All right, next. Paul, what do you have?
See that, so that's all we have for right now. We have those few changes we're gonna make. I believe we need to republish the provisional.
We haven't re-done it yet.
Oh. Not republished?
We have three weeks of hearings, I think we could do.
Okay, so we have more hearings to do, so we'll come back to you with the changes from today on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, item number four, our auditor.
On July 1st of 2024, the state of South Dakota increased the mileage reimbursement rate to be consistent with the mileage reimbursement rate for businesses set by the IRS to .655 per mile. I'm requesting that we update our resolution that we established 9/6 of 2022 and do 29 cents per mile when a personal vehicle used and a county vehicle is available and 65 cents per mile when a personal vehicle used and a county vehicle is not available.
Okay, 29 cents when a county vehicle and 65 cents if it's not.
Not available.
County vehicle. Okay, is there any questions for the auditor on this? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
Public input.
Need public, oh, excuse me, public input. Seeing none, okay, now I guess move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Schmidt and Aaron's. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jibben?
Yes, motion carried. Next, Mr. Floyd.
Good morning, Terry Floyd, Highway Department. I am requesting approval to purchase from Hutchinson County bid for highway profile milling. So we have two spots that we're gonna need to mill south of town here where we had floodwaters ran over the road and it peeled off the chip seal. So we'll be bringing them in hopefully later this week. We got about 3,000 feet that we'll be doing total, so.
Okay, is there any questions for our Director of Highway?
Public.
Any comments? Okay. Yeah, is there a motion?
Is there anything from the public?
Yes, public comment, please. All right, if there isn't, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Poppins, second by Landine. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jibben?
Yes, motion carried.
Say Terry Floyd runoff, any word on that bridge that is off of Highway 1 whatever by Tee?
106?
Yeah, that one, you know, the guy just waiting for the, yeah.
Terry's had no calls on this at all.
No, Terry, you haven't had any calls on that.
I think we're, I think we're permanently closing it. No, I'm just kidding.
Yes.
I heard Friday, so he's, he's almost done. They got base gravel put down on the one down by Beersford. So he is supposed to move up there early this week to start back.
Well, I mean, that'll take, your, your phones won't ring anymore. Any of our phones won't ring anymore.
There'll still be other calls.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you. Next, we need a motion to take off the table in regard to rules of procedures by commission. Do I have a motion?
So move, second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Poppins to bring it off the table. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Jibben?
Yes, motion carried. Mr. DeGroot?
Yes, Commissioners, Drew Grill from the State's Attorney's Office, coming for you again. So we had some discussion about this, so I made some minor changes. One, again, whatever the commission decides to adopt for these or whether the commission even decides to adopt these policies, that's up to the commission, don't set policy. We're just looking at other counties from same or similar size. Lincoln County, they all have these policies in place. We can certainly adopt some of the same policies or we can amend them to fit the needs of the county. After hearing some of the comments from the last meeting, really addressed items on 5.4 and 5.7, I think it believes subsection four. And I can jump down to page 16, I believe is where 5.4 is. So this one, probably an overemphasis from my part to highlight this, there are some questions about the gifts and gratuities. My only suggestion is we keep the same policy, but what we can do is amend the second sentence or or third sentence, excuse me, in this, in this paragraph here, examples of gifts and gratuities. Excuse me, the second sentence, make the change and amend this to no exchange of gifts or gratuities, comma, except those of de minimis value, comma, shall be made or accepted as improper. So this would allow, you know, during public comment, brought up a great point about providing, you know, food items. And right now, this is mirroring our county handbook. And then it occurred to me that we could have a problem if you go in by the plain reading of our county handbook when it calls for food items. We, I know, we have our sheriff's office, they get pizza sometimes after a difficult situation. Somebody will come in and bring pizza and show their appreciation to law enforcement. Highway, if there's a, you know, blizzard, they'll bring and drop something off there. So this would address that issue that there's de minimis value, that, you know, coffee, things like that can be provided. But yet keep the, the structure of the gifts in place. This was, you know, Commissioner Aaron's highlighted and said, why was this completely struck through? It was more of a, more of an emphasis that I really wanted, didn't want to miss clarifying section five-point-four. So my recommendation would be to keep that all the same, other than adding that one disclaimer within that second paragraph. Again, now going down to five-point-seven subsection four, there was comments about one commissioner having the ability to place something on the agenda. Based upon the comments, we can put these amendments in there or leave it the way it was originally drafted. But this addressed some of those comments that would allow a commissioner to place something on the agenda by either contacting the chair or the commission office, providing the agenda materials and putting it on the agenda. So opening the floor up, I guess, to the commission for any questions that you may have or any other suggestions that you may have. Again, this is just something, most counties have, I spoke to Commissioner Aaron's and I said, you know, basically one through fifteen, pages one through fifteen are regurgitation of all statutes. So it's probably more for the public, just so they know which statutes are in place that govern the county commissioners. And then a lot of it then comes up to policy from the commission and how you want to proceed with your agenda items in agenda meetings.
Yeah, Drew, thanks for making the changes. I can support it with those changes. I think it's still good to have some anti-corruption measures in there. And the common sense way of doing business here in South Dakota is obviously you're not getting sporting event tickets and stuff like that, but you are getting a meal or a coffee or something like that. I think that's just very commonsensical and people do like to give, you know, like the sheriff's department up there in Harrisburg, I don't know the last time those folks have paid for a meal. So, and I think it's right to come in line with what the community expectations are, which is, you know, you buy a commissioner or a deputy a cup of coffee or a donut or a pizza or whatever. That's totally in line with community expectations. And then also with regard to the one commissioner, you know, if it's not broke, don't fix it. But also, one of the other things I highlighted was, what was so interesting is there was no language in there. You know, if it's a commissioner who wants to put something on the agenda, it takes two commissioners. But there was no prohibitory language on there if it's another elected official or a department head. So why could another elected official who doesn't sit on the commission be able to put something on the agenda by theirself or without two commissioners? Or even why an unelected department head could put something on there? So that was just one of the disparities I saw on there as well. So I think that's just, these are common sense fixes, and with this, I could support it.
And just to address some of your concerns, we can certainly add that on there. And I will be telling you that my more important request that's gonna become in the future, department head policies and procedures that we're gonna be placing on the agenda, that's more time-intensive, that we're going through all the department heads and getting their input. But that's something I think is probably more imperative than some of these issues because these are a lot of times dictated by statute. But that's something that I think is very imperative that we get through and we're working through that as staff to present it to the commission in the future. Because that'll be one of the policies in there, as well as how department heads place something on the agenda and what their capabilities are in doing so.
I think the department heads would like to have some, you know, concrete advice and guidance on, you know, you know, what's the rule on how much I can spend without bringing it to the commission and so on and so forth? And, you know, we've, we've got the benefit of having a lot of department heads who have a long tenure here, so they kind of all know the program. But, you know, would be nice to have a policy put in effect so everybody knows what they're dealing with.
Any other?
Drew, thank you for your work on this. A comment that I have concerning the two commissioners, and I have not read the Roberts Rules of Order in a long time. I have read it, but a long time ago. Correct me if I'm wrong, under the pretense that if one commissioner presents something to the chairman, it's still under the discretion of the chairman whether or not it gets placed on the agenda. So my point of having two, two would supersede, you know, the chairman's discretion of not placing something on the agenda. So I, I think there's merit both ways on having two individuals or chair, or commissioners. And your point's well-made, Commissioner Aaron's, about somebody and the other elected official getting on there. But I think it's, it's important that we have something in place so that somebody can get something on the agenda by two of the commissioners signing off on it, so that a chairman couldn't snowball something. So it works, I think, to the benefit of both. If there's support by the chairman, then that would in, per se, end up being the second individual. If the chairman, by say, didn't support it, it's a simple, another commissioner could get on and so it gets placed on the agenda, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Poppins, just to address the, the commission has never formally adopted Roberts Rules.
I think that's part of this, what we're doing.
So, and what it's listed here or how it's set out, set forth in this is that it highlights that the commission hasn't adopted Roberts Rules of Orders, but the commission shall follow rules, Roberts Rules of Order as close as possible. So it's still not formally adopting it because you want to have some flexibility. As the feedback that I did get from the commission is to have some feedback, to not have that strict structure in place. But to your point, yeah, there'd be a way, I guess, for the commissioner, or excuse me, the chair, to not allow something on the agenda, but that's not within these provisions. It allows a commissioner to just place it on the agenda without the chair's approval, as is the way it's written right now.
Yeah, so, any other commissioners have comments for Mr. DeGroot? Is there any public input on this?
Good morning.
Good morning. Betty Otten, four-six-seven-eight-seven-two-seventy-third Street, N.T. As long as you're formalizing this process, when I was going through there, there are several places that have been missed. Like in four-point-ten, the order of business for regular meetings. Can you formalize here that before leaving for executive session, because you guys approved that before, that you would have opportunity for public comment before you leave executive session, if it's during, you know, during the, the middle of the meeting and not at the end? And then five-point-two on voting, public comment should always come before any motions. And then can we make motions be straightforward instead of trying to make them in an affirmative? Within, I'm making an affirmative, but I'm opposing it. That's very confusing to not only you guys, but it's also very confusing to the public. And I think that that came from planning and zoning. And why they adopted making motions in the affirmative is beyond me. But I think you should just make it straightforward, that if you're making a motion, say, Commissioner Poppins wants, doesn't want it, then he just makes the motion and says, you know, I oppose, and makes that the motion, not trying to make it a positive, and then voting against it. So, and then five-point-four, the gifts, I agree with Drew's comments and the rest of your comments about, you know, letting us bring treats or, you know, that kind of stuff. I agree with that. And then five-point-six on public, number-one, public comment. It says that speakers are asked to state their name and county of residence, but we've always done it, state your name and address, so I just want to clarify that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. This is, I'm assuming we're not passing this before we see the, the final document. And what I'm wondering is that we don't have anything added here about how citizens can help get something on the agenda. I think we need a clear, I know we have to convince a commissioner, but I think we, I think it would be nice to have some steps put in here of how that a citizen can ask to put something on the agenda. And then I just, I have question, why not Roberts Rules? I, I think it's something that our whole legislature is used to using. And I'm not sure why, as a commission, we can't follow Roberts Rules. And my other is, I was taken back when I read through this and the gifts were all crossed out. I think that's one of the most important rules that we have in this document. Not only to keep everyone accountable, but for the integrity of your positions. I can understand the cookies, you know, if that's clearly state cookies and food is okay, but taking you out to a five-star restaurant might be questionable, in my opinion. The other, I still am questioning the three-minute rule. Manyha ha is still doing five. And I believe it used to be on public comment for an agenda item. It used to be five, and then we went down to three during public comment. I was, you know, kind of timing y'all as you were talking. And it is very hard to get a thought within the three-minute time rate, especially when you can look out at the audience and see there might be only one or two. And there's thirty minutes, that is for public comment. I just, I would like personally to have the discussion, it goes back to the five-minute. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, notice Mr. DeGroot is asking for board action. I guess, this time, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
And, and I guess I'll comment that those are some good suggestions. So we can certainly come back and bring this on an agenda as an agenda item with a final draft. But I think there needs to be some clarification from the commission as to what you want to have as a policy, for instance, of placing something on the agenda. And we can also add clarification that a citizen needs to contact a commissioner if they want something on the agenda and the commissioner can use their discretion to place something, place that item on the agenda. So there are some things that I think the commission needs to, to work through here before we take official board action. And there needs to be some discussion, I guess, of what you'd like to see amended, stay the same or, and/or added.
Is there any questions for Mr. DeGroot from the commission? Is there any comments? Would we want to wait at this particular time? There's no motion. Drew, I'd be willing to get together with you and, and go through some of these things. And then we bring it back. I don't know if we have anyone that wants to make a motion at this time.
Yeah, I'm willing to meet with whatever commissioners, I guess. But like I said, from a motion standpoint, I think there needs to be some clarification on what you're formally adopting and those, you know, those amendment areas before you can make a motion. So I think there needs to be some discussion about which, and, and some, I guess, clear path forward on where the majority sits on some of those agenda, or, excuse me, on some of those policy decisions.
Now, this was a tabled item before. Do we need to table it again, or just?
It's up to the commission, I guess, yeah.
Just leave it as it is?
You could postpone it or you could table it. It's up to the commission, I guess, on how you want to proceed.
Okay, what would the commission like to do?
So Drew, on the gift section, that needs to be reworked, or?
So my, my suggestion is just on this sentence right here, where my cursor is, no exchange of gifts or gratuities, comma, except for those of de minimis value, comma, shall be made. So that kind of sets the precedent that a cup of coffee, and quite frankly, I agree as far as the, that's all set forth below as far as expenses that, you know, no five-star steak dinner at somewhere at Maury's Steakhouse or anything like that.
I was just wondering if it's in there, forgive me, I didn't catch it, but do you have a definition of de minimis?
I can certainly put one in there. I don't have one.
Might help clarify things, whether the words de minimis or nominal.
I mean, we could put it certainly, you know, E.G. five dollars, you know, something like that if we wanted to.
I'll bring it up because Maury's was brought up.
Sorry for doing that.
Great place to eat, had my birthday party there many times. Sioux Metro Growth Alliance routinely does events, not only at Maury's, but other steakhouses and places like that. Frankly, your extra twenty-five-hundred-dollar increase, part of that goes towards feeding the membership. And, I mean, you know, you put this into effect, not eating at Maury's or whatever, guess what? You've just ostracized the one commission member who represents Lincoln County, who gave them their twenty-five-hundred-dollar bump. I know some of it's just in jest and we're creating some levity. But what you're now doing is you're creating a whole series of rules that put, that put you out and, put a Lincoln County commissioner out on an island, and they're treated differently than all of the other people that are on the membership of their board. So, I, I mean, let's, you know, rules have consequences, right? And so, you know, I think probably what you add in there is if there's, if you're a member of any county sanctioned organization or something, you're gonna be treated like all the other members are.
Yeah, and I think that's set forth on subsection C, receipt of social amenities, ceremonial gifts, advertising gifts worth less than a hundred dollars in value, and we can certainly change that value amount. But that was the value amount, and I know Minion County has on theirs. And I know Pennington County, I believe, has that on theirs as well for that subsection.
People in the Midwest show appreciation through food. Maybe it's why we spent the last few minutes talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments about the commission? All right, I think, sounds like we're just gonna leave it, aren't we, at this particular time?
Yeah, I'm not even happy to meet with any of the commissioners if we want to work through the draft further. But like I said, the heavy lift would be the department head policies and procedures. That's the one I'm mainly interested in, in getting that through. I think right now it's already at fifty-two pages, so that's gonna be more time-intensive, so.
Thank you. All right, before we adjourn for the drainage board, why don't we go ahead and take public comment and commissioners' reports? Is there any public comment on non-agenda items at this particular time? Good morning.
Hi, Doug McKenna, Canton. On February sixth, twenty-twenty-four, Lincoln County commissioners voted four to one to enact a resolution in necessity to acquire our property. If you need the legal description, I can read it. We spoke with Mr. DeGroot, and he has informed us that the commission does not wish to pursue our property. We have asked him twice to have the commission formally remove and rescind this resolution. We are now formally requesting you, the commission, to place this on the next commission agenda, September tenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. Following up with Doug's point there, we, there was a mention of victimless crimes in the prior discussion. There was a victim, there were victims on this thing. Those people have, I don't know if they got a dollar involved in it or a hundred thousand dollars of attorney's fees involved in this thing, but this was caused by Lincoln County. And I think we're talking money here this morning, we're gonna give money here, give money there. I think we need to look and see what it cost this family and do the right thing. We're talking about doing the right thing. These people lost not only money, but they struggled. And I think we need to make it right with them somehow. I don't know what that is, but I think, I'm asking the commission to think about it and consider it and see how you, you would want to be treated if you were in a similar situation. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Linda Montgomery, Fairview. I have a positive about.
I have a positive about Lincoln County. I wanted to say publicly how proud I am of Harrisburg, South Dakota, the city commission there that voted with the people and turned down the $7.2 million. I thought that was wonderful. Another comment I have is last week, there was the comment about surprised at the State Supreme Court ruling on CO2. I was just grateful. I mean, prayers were answered by the citizens of the state, about landowners of the state, that CO2 is not a commodity. You don't put commodities in a pipeline and run it through three states and then put it in the ground. So I was very pleased with our State Supreme Court decision. The battle's not over regarding this boondoggle, but it's a start in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Do we need a motion then to adjourn the meeting and reconvene as a Drainage Board? And I think we'll take a five-minute break before we convene as a Drainage Board, but is there a motion?
I'd like to offer a motion to recess to go into the Drainage Board.
And I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Poppins and second by Landine to recess for five minutes before we go into the Drainage Board. Any discussion? Public comment? All those in favor, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Okay, we will recess. Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I will second the motion to convene as the Drainage Board.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? Okay, and any public comment? I know we're supposed to do that before the motion here. I forgot, but go ahead. Any public comment?
I didn't know anything about this Drainage Board, but as long as we're talking about drainage, there's a problem out by the south of the new courthouse on the highway.
We'll give you an opportunity once we go into Drainage Board, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Here we go. So, that being said, go ahead. Let's call the roll, please, for the.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. All right, motion carried. Now, we are part of the Drainage Board. Go ahead.
All right, Scott, lay it on us right now. Lay it on us.
We all know there's an issue out there on the highway, and it's caused by railroad. There's culverts that go right that railroad that are plugged. They, the railroad does nothing to clean those out. And I guess I'm asking this board to flex your muscle, because it's going to get worse with the, all the pavement up to the courthouse, there's going to be more water flowing into that creek, the highway floods. I think a insurance car got involved in that to the tune of over $100,000 it cost the county. So maybe we need to encourage the railroad, maybe even monetarily wise, to get that thing opened up, because it's costing everybody. I mean, the road gets closed, vehicles get stranded in there, it's a safety issue, and I don't know how we put the pressure on railroad. They're pretty damn independent, you know, but I would ask this board to at least look at our options to encouraging the railroad to do something about that. Thank you very much.
Scott, I was going to wait and bring this up during the commission report, but commissioners' report, but last Friday, I organized a meeting with the railroad, and a railroad board individual came down to Canton with two of his workers. We met with the mayor of Canton. We also met with, I believe, the business manager of Canton. We also had Mr. Timmerman from the Lincoln County present, along with, I know, one of the residents that lives along the railroad track, and also the superintendent of Canton Schools, and we had a very, very good, also the water department person from Canton, Mr. Garbers was there. And so, we had a very informational meeting on site, and it lasted about 30 minutes, and the railroad was very, very, I guess, willing to try to look at some of these things and make a change. They said they would let their superiors know, and they definitely could see where some of the problems were. So we're cautiously optimistic. We finally got people down here. I thank them very much, and in doing so, because they're busy right now. The flood is just really on major areas, too. I mean, you know, some of these railroad ties and stuff have been in there over a century as well, and they've been wiped out as well with this high water. So I think we got some things in the works, and as far as what they might all entail, I guess we'll soon find out. So I think we're on the right track.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Doug McKinney, Canton. The one Scott is talking about is the railroad west of the redium explant. That's the one that's plugged. That plugged up in 2014 from the flood. It washed a huge section under the railroad out, and the railroad came back in and built around the tracks, built the burnback up, and they plugged one of the culverts, they're four-foot culverts, and they plugged one of them. And then there's other issues with the redium explant running their stuff down there, but that all washed out from this last flood. So you have two four-foot culverts under the highway, and you have one four-foot culvert under the railroad tracks. That's why it's backing up so bad.
Well, it's good to know we can put that out to them as well when it comes down next time, but.
And then, when we had the flood in June, there was two state workers down there blocking the highway. The highway flooded four times by our house there from that, and I pointed that out to the state workers that it was plugged back there, and they looked at it, and I don't know what they've done yet, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I want some clarification. I'm really glad that you guys are having this today, because when the architect and the construction talked about the Justice Center, and how they were going to raise it up, in her words, going to raise it up so that it could be seen above the church.
Okay, Linda, we're talking about the Drainage Board here.
That's what I'm talking about.
Where are you going with this?
That it's going to cause drainage problem, coming from a higher level to a lower level, which is our church, and down West Avenue that you're putting in the new entrance. I'm just saying, when you increase an elevation and you have rain, it comes down quickly, you're going to, I want to know what their plan is for the drainage that's going to create by raising up that building. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that's why we have the engineers that we've hired for the project, so hopefully all those things will be shared with us as well in the near future. Any other drainage issues?
I can speak to that.
Okay.
There is a retention pond in the works from an engineering standpoint. There's a retention pond that's going to be built up a little bit. I can't remember exactly in proximity on the property, but they do have a drainage plan in place.
All right, thank you. Any other public input with the Drainage Board?
Mr. Chair, we do have, just for public information, we do have a pretty comprehensive plan on drainage, on several issues, on several creeks. I know that one of the things that the county is currently looking at with the city of T is this holding pond, this land that's directly east of their, of their ponds, sewage ponds that they have, which is a tremendous low area, which can hold, be a holding tank or a holding area for Nine Mile Creek, which will, in some ways, alleviate some of that. The sewer ponds in T are going to be going away here in the very near future, and so that's one of the things that we long-range have looked at, and probably will be able to address an issue for that area. Nine Mile Creek has been on the agenda forever and a day, so we hope to be able to take care of that, one of those things. The other area is, we're talking drainage. Has anybody been by Lake Alvin?
Yep.
They're drained out pretty well, aren't they, Commissioner?
They will, and I'll read a letter from Adam Calcia during Commissioner Report time, giving an update on what's going on. He sent it to me.
Right.
Okay, any other drainage issues?
Just, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thanks for your leadership on that issue with the railroad. I'm sure the folks in Canton here will appreciate it, because something's got to be done, and I think folks are appreciative of you just bringing all these different stakeholders to the table, so we can try to get something done. It's not a promise, it's not a guarantee, but clearly, we have to get the ball not only rolling, but we got to get all the people on the football team going in the same direction as well. So thank you for doing that, Commissioner Gibbon. Also, just wanted to speak to a couple of different drainage issues going on in southeastern Sioux Falls and Harrisburg area, just because of all the growth that's going on. You know, Toby and his team, State's Attorney's Office, myself, I don't know if any of the other commissioners have received this, but there's a couple residents up there by Harrisburg who have made some complaints about some of the growth and development going on. In particular, there's been a very particular piece of land with a particular developer and contractor, and, you know, I think it's important for folks to understand what the outermost authority is of the county commission when it comes to these drainage issues, especially in areas of subdivision authority, but also in places where there's the city and the county line. You know, first of all, the county does not have authority within the cities, with the exception of one, one or two items, I believe, and that's where there's a flood hazard area. When there's a flood hazard indicated on the FEMA map, and you're inside city limits, you got to come to the county here, and you got to get permission to dig or to do work in those areas. And I'm working with the State's Attorney's Office and planning and zoning, and basically, it was brought to us as a result of the, an issue that's specifically going on in Harrisburg right now, where we need to try to create some policies and procedures for when that happens. Somebody put a bunch of dirt in a ditch up there. That ditch is normally where the water will drain, and if all that dirt is left in there, the residents of this specific housing neighborhood are concerned that the water's all going to pool up on them. And the problem is, is that you have, and this is not a criticism, because this goes on all over South Dakota, but it's acute here in Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, particularly in Lincoln County because of all the quick, rapid growth, is you've got a city that has subdivision authority, but they either have not enacted their ordinance to take effect in that area, or they have an ordinance and they don't enforce it. So in the joint jurisdictional area, city of Sioux Falls has an ordinance, but they don't enforce it necessarily. And then it falls back on us in the county to have to do the work for them. And the city of Sioux Falls will charge a platting fee for that, but the county doesn't get the platting fee. The city does. So you get all the money, and we do all the work. So I think there is a way to resolve that as it relates to these drainage issues, and that is, you know, Toby and his team are working with city of Harrisburg, T, and Sioux Falls, and I know Drew and the folks from State's Attorney's Office were doing this. They're starting to get, you know, push the issue and get more aggressive about what to do with these issues in subdivision authority, Mr. Chairman. And Drew sent out an email, I think, late last week to address that issue, as did Toby. So, and I'll work with them some more on it, because it's in my commission district, but we're hoping to get some traction on that with the other, you know, stakeholders, i.e. the city of Harrisburg and Sioux Falls.
Thank you. Thank you for meeting with those people in regard to that, because that's very important, that they're part of that, hopefully, decision and problem solving. Any other drainage issues that need to be brought in front of the Drainage Board? If not, then I guess I look for a motion to leave the Drainage Board.
I'll move to adjourn and reconvene as county commission.
And I'll second.
A motion by Aaron's and a second by Landine. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Okay, we will reconvene as a county commission, and the agenda, what we have left, is commissioners' reports. So I know, Mr. Aaron's, you said you had something to report, so I'll let, I'll start with you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So Adam Calcia, he's the project lead for the project going on at Lake Alvin, and I'll just give you the high notes from the letter that he wrote to me. He stated, number one, there are no significant changes to the schedule with the contractor they've been using. They are making a lot of progress on the lake drawdown, and they've been able to maintain that drawdown within the minimum and maximum thresholds that allows them to tear down the old spillway. They also report that they get a lot of questions from, from the locals in the community regarding dredging of the lake bottom, and as we were told in our presentation here, the legislature has not given any money for dredging, so that's not going to happen. It's obvious why people ask that question, though, because with the lake drawn down, you can see the lake bed, and you can see it needs to be dredged, and a lot of silt in there. But, you know, there's limits to everything, right? There's only so much money to go around each year. There is some trash cleanup being done out there. I was out there with a couple other folks I know, picking up some barrels and stuff like that, and then I know some folks have just walked out on, walked out there on their own as well, trying to pick up some trash as well. The, oh, one of the other things, and I'm sure Terry is tracking on this, the engineering lead staff person from GFMP has been in touch with Lincoln County's highway work contractor, that Sukup Construction, trying to see if there was a solution to utilize some of that excess fill from the spillway replacement. I don't know if anything got figured out with that or not. Terry, did it?
Yes.
They were saying there were some rules they had to follow because of FEMA. I, I don't know, did anything, did it get resolved?
They started, they started a week ago.
Okay.
They were helping figure it out.
Well, there you go. Good, when you get the communication going, good things happen. So they're on, they're on time, they're on budget, they're on schedule, and it looks like they're going to also be able to help give some excess filler to the county for that highway stabilization, so.
Yeah, good to hear.
Yep.
Any other commissioners have a report? Okay, having none, I guess, do we have executive session, Drew?
Yes, under subsection three.
Okay, under which one? Item one, two, or three?
Three.
Item three. Preparing for contractual negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representative. South Dakota Code Law 125-24.
I think, I think it's actually under SDCL 125-2 sub-three. I think when we announce these, you know, we've got one, two, three, but those aren't the subsections of the statute that we use, so it can be a little confusing.
So which one? Commissioner Landine?
It would be SDCL 125-2 sub-three.
Okay. All right. We.
Well, I'll move to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
And I'll second.
All right. Motion by Aaron, second by Landine to go into executive session. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. We are in executive session. Second by Aaron's. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. We are adjourned.
No, out of executive.
Out of executive session, yes. Now we need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, now we are adjourned.